Like they were happy through Sunday.
I mean, I've heard you throw a story. It's like, and then.
This is what killed it.
You'll have to show.
Yeah, just.
But epic.
You'll have to show.
Yeah, we're so sure you think.
What?
The one that goes.
Is that.
Are you kidding?
I've never seen.
We're live on YouTube. We're live on YouTube.
Yeah, it was just, it was the most incredible thing ever. Like, the whole thing, like. We went to five states. We did. We did. We went to Massachusetts, Maine, Vermont, New Hampshire, and Rhode Island. In the fall. Yeah, we took the Conca Maga scene by way through the entire state. And then we went over in the morning, we went over to Joseph Smith. Yeah. And we went, like, every day, we were watching our stats. And we rented a car the first four days, and then we put, no, the first three days. Then we took public transit. We did the, with the rail, the train, the subway.
Okay, it's a couple minutes past five, so we'd like to call this regular scheduled meeting in Santa Clara City Council to order. I'm Mayor Rick Rosenberg. We have present tonight Councilman Jarrett Wade, Councilwoman Krista Hinton, Councilwoman Lena Mathis, and Councilman Ben Shakespeare are all here. We'll excuse Councilman Drake, who will not be here with us tonight. Like to welcome everyone who is here. We appreciate you being here with us. I'd like to begin the meeting with an opening ceremony, including a pledge of allegiance by Councilman Shakespeare. And then the opening comments will be offered by the Reverend Joyce D. Tony Hill, Shepherd of the Hills United Methodist Church and St. George Interfaith Council. So, Councilman, would everyone please rise and salute flag?
Please repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, I'm Joyce D. Tony Hill from Shepherd of the Hills United Methodist Church. And this is my first time here, so I'm really excited to see how close you are to my own home just down the street. I brought prayers to begin our meeting tonight. Let us pray. Our God of wisdom, we seek your presence today. Come and let your wisdom fall upon this meeting today. Give us clarity so that this council can effectively tackle each part of today's agenda, reveal those problems there is, and show them the best solutions that will apply. Point their eyes to every positive outcome, and let these favorable results and developments encourage every heart in this community in which they serve. Our God, help us to apply your wisdom as they decide on important matters and make plans for us all. This we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend. Appreciate you being here with us tonight. Okay, item number three, conflicts and disclosures. Council, is there anything on tonight's agenda that you may have a conflict of interest in that you need to disclose before we get into it? I do, the firm I'm employed with is, Jason Lindsay is a client of ours, so item number three, I do have a conflict with, so just to disclose that. Any others? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move into the working agenda. Item four A, we don't have any public hearings scheduled for tonight. On the consent agenda, council, you have before you, for your approval, the claims in the minutes from September thirteenth, twenty twenty-three executive session, the September twenty-seventh, regular city council meeting minutes, the September twenty-seventh executive session, and the claims through October eleventh, twenty twenty-three. Is there any questions on any of those meeting minutes or the claims that you have? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to the calendar of events. Just to remind you, the candidate forum will be a week from, will be next Tuesday night on the seventeenth, here, from five thirty to seven P.M., an opportunity to meet all of the candidates run for election. On October eighteenth, we have our regular city council work, or city council work meeting, and then on the twenty-fifth, our next regular city council meeting. So, council, any, anything on the consent agenda or the calendar of events that you have questions on? If not, I'd look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
A motion by Ben and a second by Jarrett to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any question on that motion? This is a money item. All in favor, say aye. Jarrett?
Aye.
Krista?
Aye.
Lena?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Guys have it unanimously, thank you, council. Item four B, general business, discussion and action to approve a proclamation declaring October twenty-third through thirty-first as Red Ribbon Week, a drug prevention awareness program. Mary Ann Novak? Come on up.
You have the proclamation?
I think we do. Do you have it on the, in the packet? I've got it here.
Okay. Whereas the benevolent and protective order of the Elks National Drug Awareness Program is the largest all-volunteer drug awareness programs in the United States, and whereas the Elks National Drug Awareness Program strives to educate all children and parents about the dangers of illegal drug use to prevent the misuse and abuse of legalized and prescription drugs, and whereas drug abuse affects individuals, families, and communities across the nation, and whereas it is imperative that visible united efforts by community members be launched to prevent drug abuse, and whereas Red Ribbon Week offers citizens the opportunity to demonstrate their commitment to drug-free lifestyles, and whereas Red Ribbon Week will be celebrated in communities across the nation on October twenty-third through thirty-first, and whereas our community further commits its resources to ensure the success of Red Ribbon Week. Now that's your part.
Now, therefore, I, Rick Rosenberg, mayor of the city of Santa Clara, Utah, do hereby proclaim October twenty-third through thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, as Red Ribbon Week. During this week, we urge all citizens to join with the Benevolent and Protective Order of Elks in participating in drug prevention education activities during Red Ribbon Week, dated October eleventh, twenty twenty-three. It's my signature fix.
I can give you a little bit of history on Red Ribbon Week, if you don't mind. It was started in nineteen eighty-five, after the death of the Drug Enforcement Administration's Special Agent Enrique Camarena. He was brutally murdered by the drug cartel when he was investigating in Mexico, and after his death, they wanted to honor his sacrifice, so local celebrations began in California, where he grew up. And in nineteen eighty-eight, the National Family Partnership started the first national Red Ribbon Week. President and Mrs. Reagan served as honorary chairpersons during that time, and also Congress officially established Red Ribbon Week in nineteen eighty-eight. And the Elks have been supporting this endeavor since the beginning.
That's great.
Any questions?
Council, any questions? I'd look for a motion to approve the proclamation.
I move that we approve the proclamation for Red Ribbon Week, designating the week of October twenty-third through thirty-first as that week as presented. Second.
Got a motion by Krista and a second by Lena to approve the proclamation designating October twenty-third to thirty-first as Red Ribbon Week. Any question on that motion, council? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Guys have it unanimously. Thank you, appreciate your good work. Do you want one of these copies?
Yes, please.
Okay, item number B two, discussion and action to approve a proclamation declaring October fourth through fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, as Fire Prevention Week. Says prevent, or presented by Andrew Parker, but Captain Youngblood is here, so we'll turn it over to him. Come on up.
Good afternoon, happy to be here on behalf of Chief Andy Parker, and to represent our fire department collectively. The Fire Prevention Week is celebrated throughout North America every October, and is the oldest public health observance on record in the U.S. entering its one-hundred-first year. Fire Prevention Week works to educate people about the leading risks of home fires and ways we can better protect ourselves and their loved ones. Local fire departments, schools, community organizations play a key role in bringing Fire Prevention Week to life in their communities each year and spreading basic but critical fire safety messages. The National Fire Protection Association, the official sponsor of Fire Prevention Week for more than one hundred years, has announced cooking safety starts with you, pay attention to fire prevention, as the paper of the Fire Prevention Week, October eighth through the fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. This year's focus on cooking safety works to educate the public about simple but important steps they could take to help reduce the risk of fire when cooking at home, keeping themselves and those around them safe. According to the National Fire Protection Association, cooking is the leading cause of home fires, with nearly half, forty-nine percent, of all home fires involving cooking equipment. Cooking is also the leading cause of home fire injuries. Unattended cooking is the leading cause of home cooking fires and related deaths. In addition, the National Fire Protection Association data shows that cooking is the only major cause of fire that results, resulted in more fires and fire deaths in two thousand fourteen to two thousand eighteen than in nineteen eighty to nineteen eighty-four. Considering this, I would like to present the proclamation to adopt October eighth through the fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, as Fire Prevention Week in the city of Santa Clara, and urge all residents and visitors to be aware of their surroundings, engage in fire-safe practices, and support the many public safety activities of Santa Clara Ivans Fire Rescue during Fire Prevention Week and all year long. This, dated this eleventh day of October, with my signature fixed. Thank you very much, Mayor and City Council. Just a quick little plug for our open house this upcoming Saturday. Thank you for all you do.
I need a motion to approve the proclamation, council?
I'll make a motion that we approve the proclamation declaring October eighth to fourteenth as Fire Prevention Week as presented.
I'll second that.
Got a motion by Lena and a second by Krista to approve the proclamation declaring October eighth through the fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, as Fire Prevention Week. Any question on the motion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Guys have it unanimously.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate.
Mayor, if I could ask Captain to share a little bit about their open house, when it starts, what you're doing, the people might be able to know what you're doing.
So, we're gonna open up our doors at eight A.M. with a pancake breakfast. It's a five dollars a plate open to the public. Then we will be doing a fire scenario demonstration at eleven o'clock, and then an education demonstration on a vehicle at one o'clock. So, it should be a lot of fun, just to kind of meet and greet some of the firefighters who work in the community and to see a little bit of what we do.
You doing a flashover?
I don't flashover, but we'll make some smoke.
Thank you, Captain. Item B three, discussion and action to consider a request from Jason Lindsay to remove the requirement to place sidewalk along the west side of Legano Lane. Dustin?
I think I'm trying to hear, council, how the rock is supposed to go down to the first unit. Yeah, I'm there. Um, basically, if you'd like to eliminate the sidewalk. Can we go down one more rock? One more, please. In State Theory, in our construction standard section three, the sidewalk provision access shall be required in all residential commercial developments. One more, please. In Title sixteen, our subdivision ordinance for veteran sidewalk are required in all subdivisions that designate industries project areas. One more, please, Barack. One more. And on final plat, he agreed to require to comply with recommendation from all city reviewing departments. The applicant shall be required to solve public street improvements with a six-foot cross-section with park shirt, which meets city standards. He's got a couple of representatives here. Would you like to take some time?
Sure.
Just need to state your name and address for the record.
My address?
I got just re-representing.
My name is Lance Smith, representing Jason Lindsay. The, so, the intent of the, the intent of the subdivision is certainly to provide, you know, a lot of local access and neighborhood, and, and this, all of the ADA, and there will be a sidewalk around all of the east side and connecting to the sidewalk on Riverwood in Poplin subdivision. Intent would just be to increase the buffer on the double front of lots from Poplin Wood to, to back to, to on the lane, and increase that vegetative buffer. It's on from street line to street. So, and then, and, and the, and we have spoken with the residents of the double front of lots and they support that, the request. Any questions?
So, Mayor, I, I met, I'm the one that told Jason that if he wanted to bring the request, to, to bring it, but I met him on site for his request. There, what there is, is, and I don't have the pointer, there is sidewalk that runs the entire perimeter from Riverwood Lane around the cul-de-sac at the end to the east side of the subdivision with ADA access. And what's happened is you've got a ten or twelve-foot landscape area that has sidewalk on the west side that's shown. As you get further north, there's a garage that's been built a little over our, so the wall comes in, shrinks that area, but the, the ordinance was there, and that's why I asked him to bring it, is, it's there for, it's spoken out, these are double-fronted lots that access off the west side, off River, Riverwood Lane. So, you do have all the ADA accesses. If the sidewalk goes in, it just shrinks up what that landscape buffer becomes, and it seemed like we were doubling up. Now, the ordinance certainly does spell that out, but I thought this was a situation that an explanation, or at least showing what's there, would be worth, it's not for a cost savings, it was, obviously, there's big trees that want to go in there, but it, it does, I thought it was worth at least having him bring it in and talk about it.
Thanks, Ben. Questions, council, for the applicant?
Do the homes face Legano or Riverwood? In the double-fronted lots?
Face Riverwood.
They face, so we're talking about removing the sidewalk on the back side of the homes.
And currently, there's a wall, he's put a, a, a wall around the entire project that's a, a pre-cast wall, so there's a wall there currently, so, yeah, you, if you went down there, you could see it and see what it looks like. You can see where that garage, where, like I said, it bumps out, but, yeah.
Dustin, what, what did the planning commission say about this one that went before them?
Repeat that, please.
What did the planning commission have on this? Because it went before them, right? It didn't?
What did you say?
Oh, gotcha, okay.
Jim, do you have some thoughts?
Yeah. So, Dustin went through, sorry, that staff report, and it clearly says that you meet the recommendations of all reviewing departments. They agreed to a fifty-six-foot cross-section. And just so you know, on the other side of Legano, that includes a four-foot sidewalk to tie in with Vineyard. Our current standards require a five-foot sidewalk, but there was a little give and take, allowing them to taper to four because of the current road project we have going on. And you know, public streets require sidewalks on both sides to promote walkability. We don't have a construction design standard for a public street with sidewalk on only one side, so we don't have that in our construction standards. And it doesn't meet Title sixteen either, which we'll talk about a little bit later, but the local road right now requires fifty foot. That's thirty-five feet of oil, two and a half feet of curb and gutter on either side, and a five-foot sidewalk. And so, that sidewalk on both sides to promote that walkability. I just recommend that we keep it, because it is a public street, it's a local street, and I'm concerned that we could set a precedent of some type, and that's, those are my comments on this item.
They're not asking to remove the curb and gutter, right? Just, just the sidewalk that would be adjacent to the block wall that runs along the back side?
Correct.
No, it doesn't, it, there are plant strips though between the sidewalk and the wall?
Oh, that's right.
So, how far was, is, will the curb and gutter be, there won't be anything between the curb and gutter and the wall?
Yeah, ten feet.
But there's no plants, nothing's been planted in there?
Yeah, it's, it's all landscape from the back of the sidewalk now to the wall, and if this is approved, the landscaping would extend to the back of the curb and gutter.
Yeah. That's one of the HOA maintained parcels, it's that piece, and then the other piece on the other side of the street next to Vineyard, next to Lot Five, or whatever lot has frontage on both Vineyard and Legano.
So, so I guess, I'm gonna speak, I get the code and, and all that. What's the downfall, again, outside of, you've got double-fronted lots that have no access to this, in a six-lot subdivision or five, whatever it is, it's, it's, the request is simply to add additional, you meet all the ADA requirements. Knowing where I live, ninety percent of the people that walk, again, we have one-side sidewalk, and then we have a trail to the other side. Most are on the road or on the, on the trail to the other side, but I guess, I understand the way that it's written, I just, in this situation, it just, it seems like the tree line, having the additional landscape buffer just made more sense than saying we're gonna double up sidewalk that literally, in my opinion, is not going to be used. For, so I, I, and this, this is, I say this on a, because it is written, we don't want to set precedence on it, but there's also, in my opinion, some common sense that says if there is an area that, you know, we don't have a cross-section for it, because we rarely see these situations. In fact, I was trying to drive the city to find where it was. Now, ours, across the street from me, is not, not sidewalk, it's a walking trail.
There is one, I can name you one, it's the only one I know of, it's up on Pioneer Crossing. Those double-fronted lots on the west side, there is no sidewalk on the homes.
Yeah.
So, it has been allowed, another one.
I believe those that have been done have been in a P.D.
Yes, they were.
Where you get that more flexibility. I know there's a, a previous applicant who, coming through this process, so Adam would love, would have loved to have not had sidewalk on all sides of the streets, but we've pushed that because that's what our ordinance, what's what our subdivision stuff allow, so. No, I think if, if this is a process we want to go in, the, the route to do it, though, is to make a change within our zoning, within our cross-sections to allow for it. That'd be, I think, the best way to do it, rather than making a change now that doesn't meet, that violates what our cross-sections we don't have, the best, I believe if it's something the council would like to entertain, that we go through the process to create the cross-section and to allow for it, rather than making an amendment to it that violates.
Again, we're, we're gonna add, and, and I, I don't disagree with that, I, I, we're looking to add for tree-lined streets and planters and things like that. If there was one place that made the most sense, you've got it right there. You're gonna, you're gonna eat up half of the, you're gonna eat more of that, because up to the top of this, you, you go from a ten-foot to about a seven-foot, so you're gonna have about three feet of landscape up to the top, where you've already meet all the ADA requirements, you meet all the walking requirements, you're simply, you're, it's not a costing on this, I guarantee the trees going in are way more than, than five hundred feet of sidewalk. But it's, like I said, this would be the one area that, that assessment would be have, and that's probably not the place, maybe it does need to go through that process, but I think some, you know, a lot of it's gonna take traffic and what's runs through there, and, you know, if this was, I think if this was out on Vineyard or a busier street, yeah, certainly where traffic's ten times or twenty times that, if you're talking five lots in a pretty quiet subdivision with a river bordering it on the south side, so, that's, again, just my side, I certainly understand that the precedence that may be set, but certainly somewhere to, to look at.
From my standpoint, I like safe, walkable communities, sidewalk on both sides of the streets. I've lived in the subdivision with no sidewalk, and I'll never do it again. I, I want a safe, walkable community for the residents that don't have to cross the street if they don't want to. That's, that's my take on it, I'm not in favor of it. This is what we try to create in our ordinances and standards, and I think that we should uphold it in.
Is there comments, council?
Can I ask your opinion, Rick? You've been doing this a long time.
I mean, there are, if you're, if there is an application to remove the sidewalk, this is probably a good one. You're getting to expand a, a landscape strip that, that is kind of odd-shaped, narrows down in some places, it, where it is narrow, it limits the size of the trees and stuff that can go in, so, and from the standpoint, if you are gonna prove No, I think if, if this is a process we want to go in, the, the route to do it, though, is to make a change within our zoning, within our cross-sections to allow for it. That'd be, I think, the best way to do it, rather than making a, a change now that doesn't meet, that violates what are cross-sections we don't have. The best, I believe if it's something the council would like to entertain, that we go through the process to create the cross-section and to allow for it, rather than making an amendment to it that violates.
Again, we're, we're going to add, and, and I, I don't disagree with that. I, I, we're looking to add for tree-lined streets and planters and things like that. If there was one place that made the most sense, you've got it right there. You're gonna, you're gonna eat up half of the, you're gonna eat more of that because up to the top of this, you, you go from a ten-foot to about a seven-foot. So you're gonna have about three feet of landscape up to the top, where you've already meet all the ADA requirements, you meet all the walking requirements, you're simply at, you're, it's not a cost thing on this. I, I guarantee the trees going in are way more than, than five hundred feet of sidewalk. But it's, like I said, this would be the one area that, that assessment would be have, and that's probably not the place, maybe it does need to go through that process, but, um, I think some, you know, a lot of it's going to take traffic and what's runs through there, and, you know, if this was, I think if this was out on Vineyard or a busier street, yeah, certainly where traffic's ten times or twenty times that, if you're talking five lots in a pretty quiet subdivision with a river bordering it on the south side, so. But that's, again, just my side. I, I certainly understand that the precedents that may be set, but certainly somewhere to, to look at.
From my standpoint, I like safe, walkable communities, sidewalk on both sides of the streets. I've lived in the subdivision with no sidewalk, and I'll never do it again. I, I want a safe, walkable community for the residents that don't have to cross the street if they don't want to. That's, that's my take on it. I'm not in favor of it. This is what we try to create in our ordinances and standards. I think that we should uphold it in.
Is there comments, counsel?
Can I ask your opinion, Rick? You've been doing this a long time.
I mean, there are, if you're, if there is an application to, uh, remove the sidewalk, this is probably a good one. You're getting to expand a, a landscape strip that, um, that is kind of odd-shaped, narrows down in some places, it, uh, where it is narrow, um, it limits the size of the trees and stuff that can go in. So, and from the standpoint, if you are going to prove it, I think a design exception is, is an important tool for the, the city to have. Um, I know that we have standards. I know that, uh, but you can't have a standard for every application that comes in. There's always, there's not a standard for a fifty-six-foot wide street, but we've got one. Um, we've got narrower streets in some places, and so I think the ability to have a, a standard in place that kind of sets the bar and, um, kind of creates that minimum that you need to get over is important, but I think you need to have the ability to make adjustments to fit the actual world, because the world's not a, not the same in every application. And you do have to have the ability, we have, um, you know, there's several examples, long Vineyard, where the pavement isn't the standard width because we couldn't get the pavement the standard width. There wasn't enough room unless we started moving houses to get it in there. So the design exception process is an important one. You guys will have to decide if this is a good application for it or not. Um, I'm confident that the landscaping that, that Jason puts in there is going to be top-notch, and, and, uh, this is a fairly low-traffic area. Um, it's not on a, on a bike route, it's not, it's, it's going down to an L shape that feeds into another cul-de-sac, so it's not a high volume, it doesn't have a connection to the river, um, where a future trailway would tie into it. So you're going to see probably fairly low traffic volume on there. Um, you do have a, a sidewalk on the other side, and you do have the ADA ramps in place to facilitate the ADA access throughout the subdivision and tight Vineyard, so, um, that's kind of my two cents.
Dustin, I, I know, again, we, we, you guys do a lot of, if this is your wheelhouse and certainly on this, is there an application where, I, I don't see the landscape plan in here or, or renderings or anything, is, is there additional information the applicant could provide that would, from a safety side, it's, like I said, I, I, living on a street similar to this, I mean, this, this is going to have probably five or ten percent the traffic we see at our house, and I just see where people walk, but it would, from the applicant's side on this, is there more information that can be provided to staff that would help, um, assure in that, or is it just, hey, you're, you're, you know, landscape, some elevation, showing some renderings against that wall, some photos?
You've got a landscape plan, haven't you?
Yeah.
Which is not attached in here, no.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we agree.
It, it was helpful for me to stand on that and look at that and look at what that wall and where that's going to go to, to sit there and go, and look at the entire thing, but I, I get it. Um, I just, I know where I live and I know where people walk, and, uh, they're, they're, yeah, that'd be great.
I actually do have one safety concern with the sidewalk on that side of the street alone, so as that sidewalk doesn't access any of the lots, if safer with a child who's walking on that sidewalk that's on the west side, and it lived on Lot four or five, it would, it would be on that sidewalk, they'd have to walk down, they'd actually cross the street into the lot. It's almost like you can't walk on that sidewalk outside without, can't access any of the lots. And so if you're trying to access one lot, you're croft, you're jaywalking, you're crossing the street. Unless, unless you walk full five hundred feet to go down to, I guess, one of the houses upon, on the front of Riverwood Lane, can't access anything. So, so to have that sidewalk there and, and try to walk on that sidewalk and, and try to access their lots across the street, it could be a, a safety hazard.
But we're talking about very low traffic, very, very low traffic. And so our local cross-section, the standard's fifty feet. That required, that's thirty-five feet of asphalt. We're going to talk about that later. It's going to state code as of February twenty twenty-four allows us to go, or requires us to now go down to thirty-two feet of asphalt. So that's going to change moving forward. But we have a so, very slow-speed road, a very no, narrow road, very small amount of traffic, so I don't see people zooming up and down the street. So I, that's my two cents.
Which I would argue is the reason not to have it there. I just don't see the traffic in that lot. You meet every require, I mean, I'd rather see the big trees, and, and I think all the residents on the west side, I think if they were here, they would speak in support of that, to get the big trees and the ten, ten-foot landscape buffer, because that does, that's their backyards, but, again, this is a difficult thing because it's, it's written, it's spelled there, it's, um, but this is, to me, feels like the spirit of the law versus, we meet all the ADA and safety. I, I don't know what the traffic study would be on this road compared to Vineyard, but I, I gotta believe it's one or two percent of what you'd see above it, and maybe, maybe less than that, so.
So we've already approved the plat. So my question is, if, if we were to, I don't know if it's, it's a tabling issue. I, I think I'm generally okay with modifying the design guidelines in this particular instance, but I also want to make sure that we're complying with our statute as well. So I guess my question is, is are we better off making the one exception, or do we want to table it, modify the design guidelines, so that we have the ability to make the exception and then have them bring it back to us? Is there a preference?
To modify the design exceptions, you would have to probably develop a criteria when sidewalk could be eliminated on one side of the street.
Right.
But you could apply in other places as well. So if you, um, I mean, if, if we wanted to go through the steps to develop the criteria, and you could look at, uh, our lot count, if the street's serving less than five units or something like that, possibly, I mean, you, you'd have to develop some kind of criteria to put into the ordinance, and so, and that can happen, sure. We can go through the process and modify the design guidelines and put some criteria in when sidewalk would be allowed to be eliminated on one side.
I guess my question is, would we, would our preference be to do, to do that, take the time to do that, to allow it, or knowing that this is so air, uncommon and irregular, that we just make the exception the one time?
Yeah, I mean, the criteria is going to be that you probably have only lots fronting on one side would be one of the criteria, and that would have a, a nominal number of lots maximum where you could do that in.
Right.
That it maybe not be along any kind of a master-planned road, like, the thing you'd want to be really careful with is dropping a sidewalk on a street like North Town. It's a double-fronted lot condition, so none of the lots front the street, but it's one of the major, um, arterial, not arterial, but a collector road.
Yeah.
So you'd want the sidewalk there because you're going to have more traffic in play.
Right.
Um, there'd probably be no residents fronting North Town, except the corner lots. So I, it'd be developing that criteria. I'd almost say the design exception may be a better route in this particular case.
Okay.
And since it's fairly, they have to come to council and request it, so they have to go through the steps that you're going through now, where they have to be able to justify it, and then leave it up to council to see if it's justified or not.
One problem with tabling it is they're on their final punch list and ready for acceptance of this.
Oh, they are? Okay.
To bring this back, and by the time we change our guidelines, you're probably a couple months out.
Okay.
And I, and I was going to say, speak to that. I, I think it's such a rare occurrence, and really, it comes down to daily trips and double-sided lot. I mean, it, it's, I think you could probably count them on one hand throughout the city where, um, you know, I, I mean, Vineyard's perfect, you know, Camp Fry right there, though, that side there, but significantly more traffic, a major feeder road that comes through there, and I wouldn't even consider it in, in this situation, but...
But most of the time, when you, when you're going through the development process, you're trying your best to double-front the street, so that you've got a lot fronting in on both sides because of the cost. This is a single-loaded. Um, so his cost per lot doubled, basically, but it was the shape of the parcel, and the fact that he went with the RA, the low, very-low-density large lots on a confined parcel in between two existing developments is why it's a single-loaded subdivision. Um, he could have come in and asked us for a rezone, downzoned it to an R one-six and double-fronted it, got probably three, four times the number of lots, uh, but that's not what he wanted to do. And this is kind of a rural section in a rural, large-lot area, um, that, like I say, in this case, it, it probably makes sense under the design exception.
And which was his ask is, I'm not, and that was his exact point, I'm not trying, he's not trying to save money. He wants to have, I mean, they're acre lots, he wants to have a tree-lined, large trees on there.
I know he wants to do large, I think, forty-eight-inch box trees.
Yeah, no, it's...
That's what he's looking to do in there.
It, it's certainly not a cost thing, and I, I don't believe it's a safety issue. Again, I, I live on a higher, I know where people walk on those, so I, I don't think it's, like I said, I don't think we would mess with our standards. I think, I, I just think it's a, I just think there's so few, I, I just can't think of too many that would, now, could someone come in, uh, uh, you know, adjacent as the property to the west and toward the river, certainly, but those, again, would be probably large lots and, and may warrant something similar on a very, you know, you're limited on where this, these roads come out and end, and, um, so...
Can I, can I just mention one point of clarification that I failed to mention? That fifty-six-foot cross-section is to accommodate their wider park strip and sidewalk. So our typical is fifty. They came and said, we'd like to do a wider park strip. They even talked with our parks director and got, uh, trees, uh, that they should put in, a recommendation. So we are working with them and trying to get something a little bit nicer, create that estate lot feel and look that they want, but that's why it's wider than fifty, it's to accommodate the park strips that they want.
It looks great. Like I said, it's, it's, it's good-looking now, and the walls look good. There are some setback things from a couple properties, but the wall just bowed around them.
Any other questions, comments, counsel? If not, I would look for a motion.
Just ask one question. I'm not counsel, but if the exception is made, though, does the plat need to come back and be amended to shield the, the removal of that?
No, the right-of-way stays where it is, he just landscapes inside the right-of-way.
Okay.
So the plat wouldn't have to be amended.
Thank you.
And the HOA still assumes the assumption of the landscape strip? And is the landscape...
I would make that a condi, if you're ever going to make a motion, I would make that a condition that the...
What, what was that?
That, basically, they assume the responsibility to maintain the landscaping inside the right-of-way. They've already done that on the other side, but that continues on this side.
So I'll, I'll make that motion that we approve the request to remove the west-side, uh, sidewalk of the Legano Lane and include it in that motion that the HOA maintain the landscape within the right-of-way.
Got a motion by Ben to have second?
I'll second it.
Motion by Ben, second by Lena. Any question on that motion, counsel? Let's do roll call vote, all in favor, Ben?
Aye.
Lena?
Aye.
Krista?
No.
Jared?
Aye.
The ayes have a three to one. Thank you, counsel. Item number B four, discussion and action to consider proposed code amendment to Title sixteen subdivisions and approved ordinance twenty twenty-three dash twenty-one, approving code amendments, approving the code amendment. Jim?
Thanks, Mayor, counsel. Um, Rock, if we could scroll down to the working copy, I don't know if Chris had it up, yeah, she has it first, good. We had a working copy and a clean copy here, so, um, you'll recall that I was here, um, gosh, when was that? September thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, very recently, where we had a discussion about, uh, state code and Senate Bill one seventy-four and kind of the required mandated changes by the state to subdivision ordinances throughout the state. Um, and so that's why we're here this evening. Um, we had a chance to have a public hearing with the planning commission on September twenty-eighth of twenty twenty-three. The planning commission held a public hearing and forwarded a recommendation of approval to the city council. Uh, the planning commission did have two work discussions on this pending change on August tenth of twenty twenty-three and September fourteenth of twenty twenty-three. Both the planning commission and council were in favor with this item proceeding. Uh, Utah Code, Section ten nine eight two oh five includes requirements for land use ordinance amendments. To amend an ordinance, the city planning commission must hold at least one public hearing, and that was done on the twenty-eighth. Additionally, a public hearing to consider an ordinance amendment requires a ten-day notice, uh, which requires date, time, and place of meeting. We met all that statute and made sure that was done correctly. Um, and so we've determined that our recommendation is that city staff recommends that the city council approve the proposed code amendment to Title sixteen, our subdivision ordinance. And what I want to do now is just kind of go through the highlights in the ordinance, and I have some pages highlighted. If we scroll down to page three, Rock, it's the beginning of the definitions, this is it. We just added of Santa Clara, Utah to the city council, so the language would be the same as the planning commission. We put in a definition for city planner, uh, city's planning manager, where the authorized representative of planners under contract to do work for the city. If we scroll to the next page, we put land use authority. Um, in this case, we have to identify a land use authority, uh, for subdivisions, it's the planning commission. So the planning commission of the city of Santa Clara, Utah, is the land use authority for subdivision of property. The next one on the bottom of the page is subdivision plot amendment, which was not in our ordinance. We added this, includes all applications for vacating, altering, or amending a recorded subdivision plat. And then if we go to the next page, five, we added our definition for technical review committee, or TRC, the technical review committee of the city of Santa Clara, Utah, which includes representatives from all working in city departments, private utilities, and irrelevant contract professionals. So we're going to move forward to page seven, and page seven, um, one more page, um, let's see, right here, um, under E, this is preliminary plat, uh, Section sixteen twelve oh four O E. This is language as required by state code, where adding in a preliminary plat application must be reviewed by the planning commission within fifteen, fifteen business days from the day of receiving a complete application. Um, if we scroll down two pages, the page number nine.
It's underneath plants, no sound. What page was that?
Sorry, one more, page number nine, uh, right there. Um, so this is under final plat. This is Six, Section sixteen twelve oh five O B, and this is also required by Senate Bill one seventy-four. The language states a review must be completed within twenty business days from the day of receiving a complete application. The city may perform up to four reviews on a given application. A review cycle is not considered complete until the applicant has adequately addressed all red lines identified by the city. The city may only add new red lines after the first review cycle in response to changes made, or if a correction is necessary to protect the public health or safety, or to enforce state or federal law. And so that's the addition there. And then if we go to the next page, page ten, this is the new appeal process, item under sixteen twelve oh five O K, final plat. This is new and in place. Uh, item K says appeal process. The following appeal process processes may be applied for after the four review cycles have been exhausted and twenty business days have passed. One, for disputes related to the public improvements or engineering standards, the city shall assemble a three-person panel of experts to include, A, one licensed engineer designated by the city, B, one licensed engineer designated by the applicant, and C, one licensed engineer agreed upon and designated by the two designated engineers. Members appointed to the panel may not have an interest in the application in question. The applicant must pay fifty percent of the total cost of the panel and the city's published appeal fee. The remaining fifty percent must be paid by the city. Panel's decision is final unless the city or applicant petition for district court review within thirty days after a written decision is issued. Two, for all other disputes, the city shall refer to questions to the designated appeal authority. At the applicant's request, the applicant must pay the required appeal fees, and we did talk about that previously. So let's move forward to, uh, Section sixteen sixteen, and we're going to move a few pages ahead because there's no changes or highlights. Actually, there's, it's just minor cleanup, uh, replacing city council planning commissioner as per statute requirements. We'll go to sixteen twenty, and we don't have any changes until we get to page nineteen. Sixteen twelve oh three O, our final plats, that's it right there. Uh, the final plat mylar shall be signed by the planning commission chair or vice chair, so we're adding that language. It just said chair before, but we have two functioning chairs. If one is gone or absent. F, the final plat mylar shall be signed by the city engineer, the city surveyor. G, the final plat mylar shall, shall be signed by the city's attorney. And then H, the final plat mylar shall be signed by the mayor, removing the reference to the city council certificate of approval. And so we're going to move forward a few more pages, only a couple more items here. If we get to page twenty-two at the bottom, it says subdivision plat amendments. Here we go. So this is a new section because the, uh, current ordinance doesn't address plat amendments, and, and we've had a number of them, uh, this past year. So the new section sixteen twenty-two oh one O, vacating, altering, or amending a subdivision plat, scroll down. Sixteen twenty-two oh two O, lot adjustments and/or mergers. Sixteen twenty-two oh three O, vacating the street, right of way, or easement. And so if we go to the first, uh, language, center of language there, we have sixteen, um, twenty-two oh one O under vacating, altering, or amending a subdivision. We, we clearly, uh, wanted to just be simple and state all applications for vacating, altering, or amending a subdivision plat shall comply with the requirements of Utah Code, Title ten, chapter nine A as amended. If we go to the next one, sixteen twenty-two oh two O, lot adjustments and/or mergers. All applications seeking to adjust and or merge lots, parcels, units, or other divisions of plans shall comply with the requirements for the adjustment of lot lines as set forth in Utah Code, Title ten, chapter nine A as amended. And then the last one, vacating the street, right of way, or easement, all applications for vacating a street, right of way, or easement shall comply with the requirements of Utah Code, Title ten, chapter nine A as amended. And then second to the last item are our design standards. If we turn to page twenty-eight, item O, this is where we have to change our local streaks a little bit down. We have to change it to forty-seven feet foot cross section instead of fifty. And then we'll scroll down one more page, and this gets into the reason why. Thirty-two feet of paved roadway is the minimum required. Our developer may build a wider paved roadway with, if approved by the city. And then the modified local street is thirty feet of paved roadway is the minimum required for a planned development area infill subdivision or designated, uh, designated streets protected area. So that thirty-five foot of oil or pavement is required by state code now. At, you know, coming up, has to be in place by February first of twenty twenty-four to only allow up to thirty-two feet. That's the maximum we can allow for pavement for, for a local street. And then our modified local street is for a P D R or an infill, which barrels it a little bit more to thirty feet. If we scroll to the next page, we actually hit that. So the last item, and this was, Jared talked this at our last meeting, if we turn to page thirty-three, this is the guarantee amount. This is under performance guarantee, uh, where we had eighty percent, and it was clear it would be ninety percent. And then we hold on to the ten percent to guarantee the improvement. So that's cleaned up to the ninety and ten rather than the eighty and twenty. And then on the next page, it makes reference to that as well, just a general cleanup, the ten percent. Those, those, that's all we have with this. Again, the planning commission did recommend approval to the council, and we do have an adopted ordinance. And sort of turning back to you, mayor and council.
Thank you, Jim. Any questions for Jim, council? These are changes that we've seen several times before, so. Any new questions?
Just, just to comment, and we're, what, four and a half months ahead of schedule, so I, I imagine most cities cannot say that. Great work. Well, we know what, so great work to the staff on that, so.
We just wanted to move forward.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments, council? If not, I'd look for a motion.
I move that we approve the updates to the subdivision ordinance Title sixteen as required by S B one seventy-four as presented.
And ordinance twenty twenty-three.
And ordinance twenty twenty-three dash.
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one. Second.
Got a motion by Krista and a second by Lena to consider the proposed code amendments, approve the proposed code amendments to Title sixteen subdivisions and approve ordinance twenty twenty-three dash twenty-one. Any, um, question on that motion, council? This is an ordinance, roll call vote. Um, Jared?
Aye.
Krista?
Aye.
Lena?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Thank you.
For nothing. Thank you, council. Number five, mayor and council reports. Ben?
I was just wondering how many more, how many more marks Brock was going to get on the screen up there, so. There he.
This is a, this is a new toy.
This is.
It's only on the mayor's screen.
And you don't dare, you don't dare touch anything like.
Well, yeah, I don't dare, I keep trying to make my, I'm so used to a, uh, screen that does that, so I apologize.
No, I'll, I'll say this first, but I'm sure everyone will say it. Uh, big thanks to everyone for Swiss Day, staff, city. That was, it was awesome. So, just got to get a tank in that parade. We need a tank. It's probably bad for the roads, so maybe, maybe a lightweight tank, so. Yeah, we, we, we'd made a lot of hotcakes. Well, staff made it pretty easy this year. They, they, I don't know what time the staff got up, but there was a lot made before, uh, but we showed up, so. Uh, yeah, it was always great, great time, great weather, so. Nice job, Gary. Way to order that. That's all I have. Pretty quiet.
Mine's pretty quiet, too. Uh, we had youth council last week, and I just want to give a huge shout out to Brock. He came and did his city manager presentation, and the council members that were there were very pleased. Asked lots of questions. He did a great job, represented the city really well. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Krista?
I attended the Southern Utah Veterans Home Celebration, their ten-year anniversary, and it seemed really well attended. I couldn't stay for the program, but, um, I did win a blood pressure cuff monitor. I'll bring it next time. Y'all can try it, and, um, it was great to see the support for the veterans home. They do a great job, so I just wanted to say that.
Super. Thank you. Jared?
Yes, I got to play mayor a little bit last week, so I can report on that stuff. Um, on Monday, I drove up to Cedar City to the conference and ended up in the mayor's association meeting and didn't realize that Governor Cox would be there, so that was fun. And the league was also there, and so, um, the league presented a packet to the governor when he arrived that had research they've done on all the work cities have done to affect affordability. Kind of a first, um, line of defense, I guess, to new legislation. The cities are doing a ton on affordability, and then it went around the table, and each city was to, um, just share a few things they've done with the governor to affect affordability. So I talked about Robert Smith's project and the affordable apartments there. Um, I talked about Silverado is probably going to come through soon. And it was interesting, um, the governor retorted back to my specific comment that that's great, like, we want apartments in the state, but the focus now needs to be on starter homes. And so he said, he, he said, we need to look back at how homes were built in the forties, right after the wars and right before the wars, like, what the, the size of those buildings were. And big families were, were raised in those, and they, they turned out just fine. I think it was the governor said the average square foot of a new house in Utah right now is twenty-four hundred square feet. And if you look at homes built in the forties, they were all about a thousand, maybe twelve hundred. So that was interesting that, he said that's, that's his biggest concern right now is, is where families can start. And then Mayor Hart brought up an interesting, interesting topic, um, I think after the governor had left, about the possibility of sit la changing where they could still own the land, but they would lease it to developers to build affordable housing. So the revenue would still be coming into that school for the lease, so they wouldn't sell it, but then, so that was kind of an out there idea that he's been thinking about for a while that was interesting. And then, um, this is probably for, and I don't know if you already know this, Brock, but the league said that on December sixteenth, they're going to do an online training for newly electeds.
I'd been looking for it. I hadn't seen it.
Yeah, he said December sixteenth, and then they'll do a more in-depth training sometime in the new year, um, in association with five counties. So it'll be kind of a two-part training for anyone that's newly elected. And I don't always have one of those in our city. And then, um, I also attended the builders conference and gave a, a short state of the city. It was about eight minutes, and so far it looks like I did okay. If you hear anything on the back channels, mayor, let me know.
I'm sure you've done good.
But basically, it was just, uh, Jim sent me a presentation. They just wanted to know, um, what new developments were happening commercially and, um, on the residential side, so I showed pictures of, uh, the Pioneer Point project. I showed pictures all around Harman's. And then, um, probably my biggest takeaway from that conference, though, was, um, Mayor Staley kind of took what the governor had said, and he'd been thinking about it already. And I had mentioned to him, mayor, in that meeting, that we talked about like a reverse parade of homes where the, the, you look at how amazing can you make a small house look instead of just getting bigger, bigger, bigger? And so in that presentation, uh, Cress showed a picture of one of the parade homes that, you know, was five million dollars and twelve thousand square feet and, you know, and an awesome house. And then he showed his grandparents' house in downtown St. George, and, you know, it's a thousand square feet with a carport and a woodshed in the back. And then he popped up again the picture of the parade of homes, and he said, I don't think my grandpa would want to live there because it doesn't have a woodshed. So anyways, it was just a good thought that if there can be some development in that area, I think it would really help, help Utah in general. And, um, I think that's all I would report.
Great, thank you, and I appreciate you attending those things while I was gone. Those are kind of some fun things to attend, but where I went, I had a lot of fun, too. So, um, there is, uh, we've been asked to come up with a, um, as part of the economic summit, that What's Up Down South, it'll be in January, they want to spotlight another business in the city. Last year, we spotlighted Dutchmans, Nick and Lisa Frye in Dutchmans Market, so I need some suggestions. Family council on a business in the city that we want to see spotlighted at the What's Up Down South summit. So be thinking about that and maybe give me some suggestions, um, after the meeting. Got to notice that solid waste fees are going up again. I'm sure that Councilman Drake would be utterly excited to report that from the solid waste district, people here tonight. But they are going up. Um, there's about a two and a half percent increase. So that'll be coming through one of our future meetings, um, to pass that through. It's going to take effect in January of next year. I think, I think that was all the new stuff. Like I say, I've been out of town for two weeks, so I'm just still playing catch-up. But I do appreciate you guys filling in at some of those assignments, um, for me while I was gone. Brock, you got anything?
Uh, just what, uh, I got notice from the hack, the Housing Action Coalition, of their second annual forum and expo on attainable housing, rising to the challenges on October twenty-fifth. If you'd like to attend, if you haven't, didn't get, uh, that, I can let me know and I'll forward on to you to register for that.
I think some, most of you, you know, you two went last year, probably got it. It's, it's pretty good. It's worth attending. Kind of gives you an update on where we are, uh, what the need is for affordable housing, um, and how we're trying to meet that need. And it's important for us to be aware of it, for sure. Anything else?
That was it.
You guys got any emergency items? Where are we at building permits?
We're staying steady. We have, um, six in the queue for Town Homes at Coyote, Coyote Landing, and our commercial in Geovango, Pat, or the second building in Geovengo. We have issued three of the four, and the fourth one's ready to be purchased, so we're doing well. Numbers are still up, still surprised.
Hasn't tapered off yet.
And three out of those four will be on Planning Commission on the twenty-six for their sign approvals for wall signs. And that's second. Down. Sorry, I've got, uh, Jersey Mike's, uh, the Blow Dry Bar, and Thrive Drip Spa are all came in together. Alfredo A, A's hasn't submitted their signs yet, but they will, so.
Okay, good. Anything else, guys?
Mayor, can I piggyback just quickly on Jared's? And it comes down to cost, affordability, land, you know, and it really, because we're dealing with it, the debate over the size of lots. The, the home, the, the land price back when the governor was talking was about fifteen percent of your total build cost. Today, it's about forty. Your permit cost was two percent or just shy of two percent. Now it's about nine percent of your affordable. So when we get into how we build that, and this is the, the great debate of R one ten versus R one six versus, we're getting, cities are getting the pressure to find that affordability, and your biggest, your number one, uh, cause to put you out of that is, is size of lots and land. And there, it's, it's just a fact. I mean, it was, it's fifteen percent back in the fifties and sixties when you're of, of your total cost, and we're, we're forty, forty-one today, so. Just, I thought that was interesting that you brought, I just thought I'd share that, so.
And it's very interesting that he said that, first time buyer housing. I bought a first home in nineteen ninety-six in Sandy for a hundred and thirty-nine nine, and he wanted a hundred and forty-six. And I said, I can only qualify for this amount. That was my first house, and I, and I, you know, I have kids that, at some point, how are they going to get a house? How are they going to attain a home in this market or other markets in, in this nation? And it's an R one six or it's a pad lot. You know, you see a lot of these developments. They're on four thousand square foot lots. They're detached, you know, detached units, but smaller. That's what keeps the price point down because it's just like you said, Ben, it's the land and then the cost, and then maybe someone can eventually get in for three fifty to four. I don't know how else we do it, so.
And I, and I, again, I don't know the right answer to that because you want to preserve charm and, and that's, it's a great debate. I'm not saying that. I live on a bigger lot than that, and here's Logano that we discussed. Obviously, there's both sides to that, but to meet that, there's, there's only one way to do it. Um, and again, what's affordability, yeah, one, one fifty, you know, today that number's four fifty, so. Anyway, I didn't mean to take more time. I thought, yeah, and thought I'd share that, so.
Mayor, I do have one more thing. I forgot. Is that okay? Um, I had a resident reach out about the proximity of food trucks to residential, um, and specifically relating to noise. So there's a food truck up south of Dollar Tree that has a, did I go out to?
Yeah, I go out every once in a while.
That has a generator running all day and then pretty late into the night. And so we don't have anything in our ordinances about food, about food trucks. Um, I looked at St. George's ordinance, and it's pretty bare bones, but they, food trucks do have to at least submit a map of where they'll be located to the city. So then a staff member could say, hey, that's a little too close to the houses or, I don't know. I was just wondering if that's something we could maybe ask staff to research, or what do we want to do, council? It's kind of the wild, wild west in Santa Clara right now, I think. And just as, as a reference, like, if I go out my front door, you know, I'm pretty far away from Dollar Tree. I can hear the generator outside of my house. So to be right next to it, I think, would be a pretty big impact. So I'm just, I don't know what council, how council feels about that, but I'd love to at least look at some best practices or, I don't know.
Yeah, I, I think we could look into it. It's the noise in general. I got, you know, I complained earlier tonight about pouring concrete at the school at three o'clock in the morning. o'clock in the morning again, and this time using a, sounds like the boom pump, pumper when they were doing the booming, so the ordinance says they can't start till seven or six?
Six.
They're pumping at three o'clock in the morning? I mean, I think we need to do something on the noise that, I know if they were doing that in my backyard, the mayor probably would have had to make a site visit, but...
Yeah, we do, we do have stuff on, on noise. The state years ago took away some bit of our, our regulation on food trucks where they only have to be licensed in one city, and so it's harder us to know. None of them really come to Santa Clara to get licensed, they go through St. George usually, so they know the food trucks. They can regulate that much easier than we can.
We can regulate where they can be located.
I, I don't know if they...
If that P D S didn't allow for food trucks, how can they have a food truck in? Period, no matter where it's licensed.
A lot of legislation has been passed in the last five to ten years for food trucks. We can only require like one, one business license in the county they're operating in for a truck.
But we can still limit them inside a planned development unless it's part of their use.
That's something we'd have to look at in a planned development, but they're going, well, it's P D C, it's commercial. But here's the tough thing, they're, they're operating in every city, and you see a bunch on Bluff Street in St. George by Neaters, they're on that pad right there.
I can't regulate the ones on Bluff Street. But I may be able to say something about the ones on...
But we're getting them, too. What I'm saying is there's a lot of legislation in favor of food trucks, and it comes back every year. There'll be new laws this year as well, really limiting any regulation on food trucks. It's, it's, there's a lot, it's tough. And that's why Brock and I sent some information to Jarrett, because it's kind of outside the box.
So, so do we need to require oversized parking in all our commercial projects to allow for food trucks? Because they don't, we don't have parking to allow for them now. They exceed every parking place in the city.
Right, and I'm not sure if anybody does. I mean, they're, they're operating statewide, up and down the Wausau's Front, every community, and they know the rules.
Making me hungry, just talking about food trucks, so.
Yeah, and to be clear, like, there's been lots of good reviews about that particular food truck. People are happy, are happy that it's there. It's just there's some noise associated with it that I don't think anyone ever anticipated.
I think that's the key with this one.
You thought a car would be parked there. You thought a car would be parked there, maybe it'd be some white shining.
Maybe it's just a matter of making a site, making a visit to the food truck and seeing what it can be to quiet this noise.
Yeah, we, I, I've been up there, and we'll, we'll look into regulations, what we can do. I'd been, been up there and took a look at it. It wasn't open at the, at the time when I went through, but I think there's location you could shift to where, say, maybe that is not as impactful on the resident. Yeah, you might not have the, as good of visibility straight on a road, but you could shift that to say, hey, the generator's facing other commercials, not to the resident. So there's some things I think we could do to go up there and try to mitigate those impacts.
So, so it's ironic, the one at Buck's A's, they're building a store in Hurricane, and we're running, because of that, we're running power out to the planters so they don't have to run off a generator. I mean, we, they just got added to, specific to that, that, hey, we don't want to run off a generator, so we're running two or three spots out in the planters where future trucks, not knowing, but at least it'd have power in those locations, so.
Hook him up, Gary. Hook up the food truck to a meter.
I know, I wonder, just put a meter right there.
They, they would rather run off, yeah, the generators aren't, you know, give them grief, the generator has problems, and you've got sixteen, eighteen-year-old kids trying to start it up, so having a direct line of power is, I think, better. But yeah, it is, it's interesting that they're, they're all over.
All right. Anything else, Council? We don't have executive session tonight? So I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Lena and a second by Ben. In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thanks, everybody.
Jeez, great meeting.